Good six pack will call this meeting order. Uh, this meeting is be recorded by. Community entry and technology, depending on the person's present doing the same as modified chair at this time. Uh, we have minutes from May thirteen.
We're recording.
Yep, come on in.
Uh, we'll have minutes for May thirteen is our motion to accept the minutes.
Yeah, well.
Just making sure it was here.
Okay, uh, we do have to roll calls since we are of some one member vertical shows.
Bill, are you taking notes? Cause Kathy is not here.
Yes, yes.
Hi.
Ben.
Hi.
I.
Uh, public comment.
Stephanie's here, I'm gonna unmute her so she can ask to comment if she wants.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, hi Stephanie Duglos Chapman Street. I, it's more of a kind of a question, and I know maybe you guys can address it or not, but um, I've been watching the. Cell phone tower slash uh, expansion of AT&T service. At the zoning board of appeals. And my concern is how will that impact um? G sets uh, desired to expand and will that in? Pact um, our market share of. Um, potential broadband or um, any other G set available services. Um, and I was wondering if you guys, because you are a carrier of broadband, um. If you were reached out as a stakeholder and allowed to uh, put some input into that particular bu- public hearing. And that's pretty much all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks. Are you talking about on a techno- technologically speaking or on a? I think maybe she's talking Stephanie, if I get it wrong. Say so in the chat and I will unmute you after. Um, I think she's talking about, are they gonna offer like Verizon cellular internet through that or whoever it is and? That would be my guess. I mean, I'm gonna ask you to unmute and you can tell me if I'm right Stephanie.
Um, well, I was more concerned about market share and what you think that G sets. Um, i- if that's gonna impact the customer um, acquisition for the company, you know, I'm, I'm there. You know, listening to the variance um. And the decisions, they haven't come up with one yet, but. I'm hoping that it doesn't impact us negatively of, you know, with our desire to expand to as many people as we can in greenfields. And that was my concern and in seeing as how it's a financial, you know, impact potentially to G set. Um, for competition reasons, uh, I was just wondering if you guys were. Or if you guys could speak to that a little bit, and if you have no concern, that's, that's fine. I just didn't know if that's something that. Should be brought up to AT&T um, because they are coming to expand into the market share of what you guys offer. Thanks.
Um, I can answer that, uh, we, no, no one reached out to us. And there will for sure be service offered through that tower. I, I will say that a great deal of the town is already covered under cellular internet. Um, we do take that into account as best we can. Nobody's a perfect prognosticator. But we don't think that it will affect us to a level. That is any worse than the competition we already have from uh, Comcast or Verizon or T-Mobile. That are already offering that service to people um. It, it's just the way the market is right now, so we try to take it into account. Will we not lose a single customer to it? I'm sure we will, but we have. Factored it into our thinking about market penetration and we don't think that it will be a crippling blow to us. At all, but we'll watch it carefully because we already watched other people. Uh, who are in the marketplace as well. So you're right to bring it up. It's, it's certainly a, a service that will be offered through it. But we have thought about it and talked about it and, you know, we try to plan for things as best we can. And we'll wait and see what happens and if we have to adjust planning because of it, we will, we can't stop it. Um, you're right, I'm a little bit surprised we didn't get asked to comment on it. That's a good point you make, so. I.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, so thanks for that.
Thank you. Old business.
Okay, um, I honestly, this, this is not gonna be a very long meeting.
No, that's, that was, that was his own. Quicker hand.
Okay. Um, um. Uh, because a lot of what we talked about last time is just still in progress, so we don't have a lot of new updates this time. Um, in North Greenfield. Uh, the first part of the backbone pull, the ninety-six has been pulled all the way to the LCP. Um, we don't wanna fully configure the LCP until we get a hundred and forty-four coming from the other direction. We're still waiting on the railroad to um, process through our request for insurance. Necessary to uh, do work anywhere near there because we will aerially cross the railroad up there. Um, we will get it and in the meantime, it's not like we're doing nothing. We're putting up strand. Uh, where I can't remember the latest place.
Uh, we're on Lightin Road doing strand.
Okay.
So also all of the uh, carrier make ready is completed, so all of um. Verizon Comcast um, ever source, all of the actual make ready is done, so on the. Um.
Backbone. Right.
Won't be very clear, only on the backbone.
Yeah, so there were a few last polls from Comcast and I think one. Secondary that ever sourced either had the lower or raise, I don't remember which, and those are all done. So the finally, for the backbone only, the make ready work after years is finally done. So as soon, we're, as soon as we get the go ahead from the uh, railroad. We will have um, the, our people who are pulling the heavy um. Up fiber optic cable for us come back and pull the one forty-four and then we will spend some time. Configuring the LCP because. Not like water, so there's a lot of work that needs to be done and I asked Bill for just a very quick overview of what that means.
Yeah, so excuse my voice, my voice is on its way out, so if I can't make it through this, I apologize um. But basically, we have to configure the LCPs um, switching electronics. Um, so that we can provision and configure the access points that are gonna be installed along the streets. Um, and that takes time, you know, we have our, you know. Our other LCPs that we'll use to help template that, but we have to bring that up, test it, make sure it works. Um, because if we can't really have issues at these locations because they're serving. You know, all the customers of them, so losing an LCP or misconfiguring them can have a big impact. So we gotta make sure that those are uh, brought up to speed. We also have to check HVAC batteries, you know, redundant systems, all that type of stuff. Um, so there's, there's a quite a bit that goes into just bringing it up and we can only do it when everything's. There, hooked up and ready to go.
And splice.
And splice. Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, yeah, so. So i- you know, i- it's. My, I fall back on my sort of same. The way I go at it is to say it's not a garden hose, you don't plug it in and turn it on, there's a lot of work left to be done. To make the system work, we have a plan to move through it and we are moving through it. But nobody would like it to be done yesterday more than us because we have a lot of customers up there who would love to sign up and we're getting to it as. Quickly as we can and once the backbone's done, we can start addressing lateral. Uh, runs of, of cable fiber optic off of the backbones and start turning on customers, so. Um, it's moving forward to get, being done with make ready on the backbone is really a lovely thing. Because we hate make ready and. That, that doesn't mean it's done in all areas, but we increasingly are finding ways to sort of. And run around problems and we're gonna have to continue to do that and we will. So proceeding, you will see G set. Truck uh, up and about on various days, we're. Are we fully done with Berniston? Yeah, we are. So if we're off the state road, we don't have to do quite as many, we still have to do some. Uh, police details and we've had to, you know, go through the process of regularly asking for permission to work on state roads. From Mass DOT who've been pretty good, but it still takes time and getting off of Berniston Road is also. A really nice thing too.
Again.
Yeah, um, thank you, that's very helpful, um. Could you go into a tiny bit of detail about waiting on the railroad regarding insurance and are you going? Um, you know, like. I don't know what that really means other than that is a holdup, so. So do we have somebody reaching out on a steady basis? Do we have a timeframe and uh, that's? Obviously is something that's, you know, delaying a little bit, right?
Yeah, I can speak to that. So it's the application process that you go through. It is very long and expensive, just like make ready, um. We. The. The insurance is just a part of that, there's specific railroad liability insurance and then there's also an application. So we had to design and implement, show them how we were gonna cross. Um, so even though we're just going aeroly, um, they need to make sure that it's safe. Um, and we're not gonna drop fiber or cable onto the railroad, um, and so that's what the additional insurance is for. Um, we sent that check four weeks ago. Um, and they told us it would take six to eight weeks, so. Um, I have uh, reached out twice, um, but I'm trying not to be too fishy. Um, I don't think it's gonna get me any further, um, so I'm just waiting for that. We've sent everything, I don't think there's anything we're missing, I think it's just a matter of them um, giving us the authorization.
Uh, the only thing I would add is we sent the check four weeks ago, we started the process far earlier than that.
Yeah.
Because we had to go back and forth, we had to do design drawings for the aerial crossing. And then we had to work not just with them, but with um, Maya who handles insurance for the city and going back and forth. On answering their particular demands and we spent at least two weeks on whether the umbrella insurance counts. As the additional insurance that the railroad wanted, so we sent the check when everybody agreed that the insurance was. Uh, appropriate, but we spent months working on that before we actually sent the check. So we, it, we didn't just start four weeks ago, we started a long time ago, it's just a difficult process and. They, you know, they take their time because.
Yeah, and this is not unusual with wherever, I mean, we deal with it. And we have tracks that run through the middle of the country club and.
Yeah.
We do what they tell us to do.
Yep.
Cause they can make our life difficult if we don't. I, I had a conversation with someone from, from DOT uh. When they, when they attract first, uh, when they first uh, made the decision and track coming through, some requirements they wanted us to do. I said, we've been here for over a hundred years. He said, yeah, we've been here a hundred fifty.
Yeah, yeah, like if.
Your easement, and he said your easements for cows and farm equipment.
Yeah.
Yeah, not golf.
We let you do the golf.
We had to do, we had to do an easement um, at the back of the fire station property, that there was a whole.
Right.
Process with them and they, it worked out, it's, you know, on their timeline, but they weren't obstructive, right?
No, they're, they're, they're not trying to affect us, they're just really slow. Yeah.
They literally have two people for the panam. Yeah.
Which is the entire northeast region, they have two people.
Yeah.
Um, that's how it goes, so. I'm trying to think of anything else on the north build. At the moment, we're getting there, it, when, when it's done, we will. Cover a whole lot of houses, we think we're gonna get a bunch of new customers, so we're moving forward as expeditiously as we can. So. Business, anything else Pamela, does that answer you?
No, I think it's very helpful to have those extra bits of information, not just for me, for anybody that's wondering like what, what else is going on. They all know what make ready is, so this is sort of like, we're still waiting, so thank you, it was very helpful.
Sure.
Uh, can I just ask, I think I related question, old business, are any, I'm sorry, I cannot remember this, or is any of this bead grant money? No, not.
No, with all of the grants that we're working on with now have been allocated out. Uh, to, and I've spoken with MBI about this with the head of MBI and I've spoken with the head of digital equity. And they say, no, it's here, these ones are okay. Um, they did pretty much say, we're not really counting on bead. And I think that's.
Is on the bead radar and it is. One that is up Mohawk Trail, we would have to go through Southern Falls. It was originally on the gap grant and we had a discussion about the amount of funds that it would take to get to this one house. And it was determined by MBI to pull it off and put it on bead.
Yeah.
Um, so the one, that the one probably is affected by any changes to that.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, right, and we. You know, I, I'm not saying we said, yes, we really wanna do it because it's, it's. A case where we would go five miles, we would have to do an intertown agreement. And Comcast is literally like three poles away and we said, look, in this case, they pulled it off and put it on bead and. Now I, I personally think there's very little chance that bead will do anything other. I would have told you a week or two ago, would have all gone to Starlink, but I'm not sure, I think that's true anymore, so. I, I think they may just claw it all back, so, but we checked and we, we had several. Pretty open conversations where we said, this is a reimbursement grant, we're not gonna do anything until you really assure us. And I have said, I wanna get something from you in writing about this and. But I, I, having said that, I do believe them because it's an incredible pain for them to and. Promising something they can't deliver is not something they would ever wanna do, because it would make their lives miserable. So I do feel, you know, for us, that's residential retrofit. Um, gap and digital equity, so we have three grants now that we're working in. After finishing the north build, which was Parpa, all the grants total, it's pretty close to three million dollars.
Yeah.
To get stuff done, so we man- have managed to secure quite a bit of the grants, which is good, because we need it.
Hmm, awesome.
So. Anything else about Berniston? Uh, old business, okay, um, new business, the splicer truck. We talked last month about how difficult it would be to repair. I am. Maybe the most optimistic person in this room, thinking that we may actually be able to. We actually got it back up from North Hampton. The um, computer has been properly strapped into its cradle. It began throwing some different codes. And we also, um, the DPW who really gets a lot of praise from me, they really are great. And Paul and his team have worked really hard on this and they went through and. You know, did things like replace all the coils and the spark plugs and they've been able to get the engine running steadily. They have to repair some, uh, they have to put some new brake pads in. And then they will take it out and test it and test it, there's one code left for. An electronic controller for the accelerator pedal that is, that none of these are particularly expensive fixes at all. So I've said, we're gonna give it a shot, that does not mean that we won't be looking at the splicing trailer, we definitely will. But it does mean that maybe we could wait on the van to really look for a really great deal. Instead of having to do it immediately, these are old vehicles. I think it's pretty normal to expect that the older trucks get the more repair there needs to do. So eventually, we need to add a, a vehicle because we have two people out and we need, they're not in the same place at the same time. And we need two vehicles and if one of them goes down. Then they are way less efficient because they have to go everywhere together, so eventually adding a third vehicle, mostly for the installer. That can be a much singular, just a. Probably a used transit for transit van or something like that. Um, is something that we could do, but. We'll see. You know, maybe it'll work, maybe it won't, but fixing the splicer truck would really be great for us. Because it is the only place we can now splice. Uh, in bad weather or cold weather. Um, we're, I don't remember, we talked about, I don't think we've set a date, we're gonna go to a fellow MLP and check out their. Splicing trailer that they've bought and we're spending more and more time talking to other MLPs and sharing information. And trying to work together as best we can, which I think we should do even more of. Um, so. By next month, we'll know and either my optimism will be lifted or it won't. And because this is sort of, if this doesn't work, then I think we'll, we'll just have to move on. Um, but I think it's worth spending a few hundred dollars more just to see if we can get it fixed, because the splicer truck's a hundred grand. A used one is a hundred grand, so. Um, it's worth putting that money towards it. Uh, the last thing for tonight again is uh, we haven't talked quite as much about the digital equity grants. Um, and that is. You know, the retrofit for the weldon is aimed at low to moderate income. And we have as part of that grant identified that we wanted so older um. Demographic low and moderate income at the weldon, that's, we're moving forward on that as well too. Um, the gap grant is about, really about getting to people way on the outskirts of town that, that, that uh. Companies, there, there just isn't really uh, uh. Private sector model that says we'll build out to you, so it happens only through grants. The digital equity grant is much more like the retrofit grant in that it's really trying to bring internet to people. Who traditionally have gotten a terrible deal or no deal at all and we're working. With the housing authority, maybe you can talk just a little bit about that for.
Yeah, so um, Greenfield Housing Authority applied actually for either the wifi uh. Or retrofit, um, the MBI put them into the wifi category, so it means that. Um, they have four different locations, Elm Terrace, Oak Court, Morgan Allen and the Wind Flow Building. Um, all of which um, are part of this grant to bring um, wifi to the unit for all of them. Um, at a hundred hundred. Um, so GHA and MAPC who's in charge of the wifi grant for MBI. Um, reached out to us and asked us if we would be interested in partnering, there's two different parts of it. One is bringing internet service to the location, the other one is bringing wifi to the units, so. We said, yes, for sure, we're interested in the internet. Um, we are not a managed wifi provider. We've been in discussion with doing similar work that we're doing at the weldon. Um, so bringing fiber to the unit and providing service, um, so I have a meeting with all of them and MBI tomorrow. To discuss what that looks like. Um, and move that forward without, so. We're gonna do, essentially we'll do hopefully, um, many retrofits in each of these locations. Um, and give them better service than what a managed wifi provider would. Assist points and hallways and maybe not have great service. Um, MAPC has done this multiple places. And they have seen poor wifi coverage and had to go back and fix it, so they're really excited about the opportunity of. Of doing this within the budget that they have because we are. And, you know, essentially a not-for-profit and not trying to make a million dollars off of it, but bring quality service, so.
Right.
Exciting.
And that's, you know, hundreds of apartments, hundreds of units along with uh, retrofit. We're well over three hundred units of low mod in this town that we'll be able to. Which is great, I really think we all feel good about that and we really wanna make it work. She's right, managed wifi is terrible.
Yeah.
It just doesn't work. So we basically said, we'll bring internet, but we're not gonna do managed wifi, because we just don't believe it works. But for the same amount of money, we think we could give you a much better solution, so we'll see where it goes, but I. I think that they're gonna find it hard to pass up a much better solution for the same amount of money. We can do bulk programs for everybody at Elm Terrace, for everybody at Oak Courts, for everybody at the Wind Low. And for everyone at Morgan Allen House, that would be great.
But that's a, that's a good point, um, the. Grant, the difference in this grant is that this grant will specifically pay for the operating costs and everything for two years for it. So nobody in these four locations will pay for internet at all for two years. And then we'll work on the, the bulk pricing like we have at the weldon.
Right.
Yeah, which is substantially.
Right, so it's, it's really a way for us to get to places that it was really hard to and once we get there, because they don't have to pay. For installation, they don't have to pay for any of the CPE equipment, it's all covered. So once it's done and the grant sunsets, which they all do, we'll be in a position where we can say, okay, it's a, we've, we've got a bulk program going. With GHA, which we are allowed to do and that will allow us to really work to make sure that people can. Get connected at a hundred megabits up and down and that. That's a big part of our mission, so we need to make it happen. And that's the, the third, I. Just don't see any more internet grants coming out of Washington for years. I just don't, I don't think it's gonna happen, so I think this is our chance for the next couple of years to really expand out. And take advantage of it, so we're going after it as hard as we can because. We better do now, because it's not gonna be available later, so. And I think it'll work, I mean, I think we've. By necessity, gotten pretty good at being very low-cost infrastructure builders and very low-cost providers, not nothing. But. You know, when you really work out what the real prices are from Comcast and the real prices are from other people, we're, we're really still pretty darn good deal. So, and that's something that we'll be able to continue, because we don't need to make more profit for shareholders every quarter. We can just stay where we are and.
I need to make sure we can buy trucks.
Yeah, we need to make enough money to operate, but, but I was thinking, you don't have a group who's saying they wanna pull more money out every.
Any department, with the exception of. Building department, building inspector and health inspector and our rec department. Only has used vehicles. And we've never had a new vehicle.
Never, no, the splicer truck is.
The van was now.
The van.
The one that got lost in the flood. Um, the splicer truck is fifteen years old. So.
And all of those, and you know, trucks are bonded.
Right.
Uh, and we don't have the.
Yeah, we're, look, we, we will need to have bonds in the future, like anybody does. Be, if you went to water and sewer and said, you can't ever have a bond again, they'd, it'd be, they'd stagger on for a while and then be done.
If I know, they wouldn't buy trucks.
No, they wouldn't. No, so a, it is something that will happen because it has to.
Fire department wouldn't get a million dollar fire truck if it wasn't bonded.
Right.
Right, or some others.
I think this is, yeah, I mean, I think this is something people understand, people don't pay cash for their house or their car. The idea that loans exist to make cash flow work is probably one of the more accessible ones, so. Well, we've gotta work on making sure that requests get to the council and we will.
So really, you know, uh. John and I talked earlier this week and today, um. There wasn't a lot, anything new really to speak about, it was more, it's on the schedule, it's on the meeting.
Yeah.
Be both members and pension members and public.
Yep.
Um, but uh.
Yeah. Not, not really, I mean, we're, it's sort of a to-be continued meeting where the stuff that we talked about starting, well, we're in the midst of doing it.
Um, I would like to, to recommend that we take July off. With the, of vacations.
Okay. All right.
I don't have objections to that.
I don't think it conflicts with me, but the. It will in August, I think.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, couldn't we maybe do July or August?
Yeah, why don't, why don't we try to the end of July, would that be better? Cause I'm actually away the first of August.
And wait a second, so.
Uh, when we're away, oh, we're first week, I'm away the first week of August too.
What about the last week of July?
As long as it's before Thursday.
Yeah, well, it'll be Tuesday.
Uh, that would be the two twenty-ninth of July.
Yeah, that'll work for me.
I mean, I do have a haircut, but if we're starting.
I'll have very Spanish.
Yeah, I have no sympathy for a haircut.
All right, Pamela, does that work for you?
Yeah, I think the twenty-ninth would work. Um I, something just occurred to me. So um so that's a yes. Um but can you tell me where we are with the um uh you know, the door hanger, the door, the door hanger thing?
Oh, yes. Um we had a a first run that we printed. And I don't know if we've used them all. We've been putting them out regularly.
We've used most of them, but not
And we have another run coming and we're just gonna do runs. And we literally are covering every dwelling that we can hang it on a door. Uh so it'll take a little while to do that because um they also have other things they need to do. But yes, they are out there, the ones you looked at. Um come in and on, we've got one here. I'll show it to you. They're huge. They're huge. And that, I think you have to have something that will make people go, what the heck is this? Because
Yeah.
mailing there, just don't, they just throw mailings away. So um so, yes.
Okay. Yeah, twenty-ninth works for me too. Sorry to back up a little.
No, no problem.
Alright, well, if that's it, I would, we do have to do a roll call, but I would take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Hi.
Hi.
Absolutely. Nice to see you.
Okay, thank you very much.